Sure.
Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And we'll have a roll call. Trustee David here. Trustee Hankin.
Aye.
Thank you for attending virtually. Trustee Manning is not here yet. Trustee Morris.
Here.
Thank you for being here. And trustee Ratauski Heinz. Not here yet. Do we need to make a, no, we only motion to excuse as long as they called in. Uh, we do have quorum, so we're gonna proceed. Item number four on the agenda, the approval of the minutes from March tenth, two thousand twenty. There are not minutes from April as that meeting was canceled due to the stay at home orders. Oh, minutes meaning. Apologies, there are official minutes. Do we, do we vote on, okay, so we need to vote to approve both March. Thank you. Oh, see, yes. We'll start with March, on item number four.
Alright, I make a motion to approve the, uh, March tenth, two thousand twenty, uh, meeting.
Thank you.
As well as the April fourteenth, two thousand twenty, meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second for the approval of the minutes?
Uh, a second, sure.
Thank you, trustee Hankin, and all in favor of approving both March and April's minutes?
Aye.
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 Thank you, and the motion carries. Um, item number six, public comments on agenda items. Do we have any of our, um, public tuning in right now or no?
On that note, Grace is monitoring the ecomments by email.
Okay.
Grace, have you received any ecomments at this point?
Uh, I'm sorry, did you guys approve the April minutes?
Yes, the minutes were approved.
Okay, so we currently do not have any comments.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you. And do we have any, um, comments or information, public comments from the floor, from our, um, friends of the library?
On behalf of the friends, I had some email correspondence with, uh, Tina Victory. And she said she would not be able to provide a report, obviously didn't want to, to extend her best wishes to the board.
Let's send them back to her.
Yeah.
Yes. Alright, well, we will continue on then with item number eight. Which is Resolution LB twenty twenty dash oh four, a resolution of the Board of Library Trustees of the City of Palmdale, California. Ratifying and approving the Palmdale City Library Check Register for checks dated March ninth, two thousand twenty, and March twenty ninth, two thousand twenty. Totalling six thousand, six hundred eighty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Alright, I move to adopt Resolution LB twenty twenty dash oh four.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Okay.
Thank you, trustee Hankin, for seconding. We're gonna do a roll call vote. Trustee Morris.
Aye.
Trustee Hankin.
Aye.
And trustee David, aye. So the resolution is adopted. Item number nine is also Resolution LB twenty twenty dash oh five. A resolution of the Board of Library Trustees of the City of Palmdale, California. Ratifying and approving the Palmdale City Library Check Register for checks dated April twenty fifth, two thousand twenty. Totalling eight hundred fifty-two dollars and eighty-four cents.
I move with that. Resolution LB twenty twenty oh five.
Thank you for the motion, trustee Hankin. Can I have a second?
A second motion?
Thank you, trustee Morris. And roll call vote again would be trustee Hankin.
Was that me? Aye.
Thank you, trustee Morris.
Aye.
And trustee David, aye. And the resolution is adopted. Item number ten, the director's report.
Yes, I did not prepare a written report, however, I do have a verbal report that I would like to give. Because a few things have happened since the last time we met. So if you'll bear with me, I, I wrote about two pages worth of notes. I'll go through these. And feel free to ask questions as I go along, or certainly at the end, can hand out to take any questions. Basically, what I felt like I would do is provide kind of a chronology, if you will, of what has happened since the last time we met. To the best of my recollection, and I actually thought, you know, this could be interesting for posterity's sake at some point down the road. So again, I will, I'll be referring to my notes and may read some of them. Feel free to ask me any questions if you'd like to as we go along. So on or about March eleventh. I was at, I was invited to attend an emergency meeting that was called by the city manager to discuss what was coming. And to begin talking about strategies. That was based on the information that he'd received. I remember him talking and Eric was there. The city manager talking about just getting out of a, uh, conference call with the White House that day. I appreciated being invited to have the library's perspective, and that was a meeting of, of senior managers in the city. I remember there were breakout groups where we started talking about what this could mean to the city, and how do we still provide services and under what conditions? As we all know, so much was unknown, and there's still many things unknown. But that's how, that's what kind of started for the library. Later that afternoon, the city manager held a, a, a meeting with all city staff that were invited to attend, and he went over some of the same information and also some of what had been discussed just earlier that afternoon. At that, at that point, the library immediately suspended all walk-in programs. Because at that time, I think the guidelines are no groups over a hundred or fifty, something like that, I forget. That's when we suspended all the walk-in programs. And then it was, uh, we were open on Monday, March sixteenth, at eight PM that night is, is when we closed our doors to all walk-in, uh, services. The next several days of that week involved many discussions, brainstorming of ideas of what services could still be offered to patrons. Communicating with the city about, uh, what this all could mean. On or about Thursday, March twentieth, is when, uh, according to my recollection, is when the governor's stay-at-home order was issued. In response to that. Uh, Library Systems and Services, as you know, that's, uh, that's who we, we report to, is library staff. Directed that all library staff were to stay at home until further notice. I sent an email to you all about that time. And, uh, then there were multiple communications for the next couple of days in, over the weekend. That, uh, between myself, LSNS administrators, and city officials over that weekend. As everyone was seemingly trying to figure out how to proceed. On Monday afternoon, March twenty-third, we all knew a little bit more. And on Tuesday, March twenty-fourth, all library staff were requested to report to work. And, uh, we held a general staff meeting that morning. After that general staff meeting, uh, I met with each staff member individually. To talk about their concerns, answer questions. And to talk about what this might mean going forward. Since that time. For information, we have, uh, we have sixteen positions at the library currently. We have fifteen filled, we have one vacancy. So we're talking about fifteen staff members. Since that time, staff members have worked a staggered schedule so as to spread out the number of employees in the building during the week. Including some work authorized to be done from home. During that week. For, as far as the patrons were concerned, all due dates for materials that were currently checked out were extended for everyone to May eighth. And then when the stay-at-home order was extended. Whenever that was. Uh, those due dates have now been extended to June first. The, the book drops were locked, so because we don't want people returning materials, and we've been assuring them through phone, um, when people call in and then on, on the website, that materials are, the due dates have been extended. Also during that week, the, uh, Library Collection Agency Services, you may or may not be aware that we, we contract with a, a service called Unique Management. Who handles delinquent accounts for us. Patrons are given about two and a half months' chance to, if they get multiple notices and if they don't return materials, and if it's over fifty dollars, then they're sent to a collection agency. Uh, but during that week that all this was happening with the city's approval. We suspended that service with the collection agency, so they are not going after delinquent accounts until further notice. By the end of March, the California State Library provided a grant program called COVID nineteen Crisis Collection Grant. This is a great opportunity, which I, I give, uh, kudos to the state library. As I've talked with colleagues across the country, uh, California was pretty quick to, to respond to this situation. After applying, Palmdale City Library was awarded five thousand dollars for use in adding significantly to our ebook and downloadable audible, audiobook collection. I usually don't do much ordering, but I did that previously in my career, but we have other librarians that do that, but for this grant. I got back into the ordering. It's kind of fun, I admit that, as a librarian. And, uh, so I did all that ordering and finished that, um, spent the five thousand dollars, finished it on May fourth. For information, two hundred and three new titles were added to our, it's called Cloud Library. That's the name. There will not be a quiz on this. But Cloud Library is the name of the, the product that is provided by this vendor. The actual vendor is called Biblioteca, and they call their ebook service Cloud Library. And so we got two hundred and three titles. That's, uh, ebooks can be very expensive. And, and the prices range from as little as like five dollars each to eighty dollars. Uh, depends on how popular they think it is and where it's going to be and things like that. I will add that another side benefit of our increasing the size of our cloud library collection that you just learned about. Is that we now qualify to join what is called the California Cloud Link Library Group Consortium. This is, this, this is a little benefit that's come out of this crisis. We, um, I first learned about this California group on about two and a half years ago, and have been interested in, in joining it since then. And in a nutshell, four cloud library libraries in California back then decided to join, form a consortium. And the only thing to get into it was you had to be a cloud link, cloud library library. Which we were, but you had to spend a certain threshold, a certain amount of money in order to join the consortium. But we, we now meet that threshold. And so the bottom line is, later in May, we will become one of over thirty libraries now that belong to this California group that that take advantage, that use the cloud library service. This consortium is called California Cloud Link. And what that means to our patrons is that over two hundred thousand titles will be available for them to access and to check out. The way that works, some of the details are that, for example, Palmdale City Library patrons, when you go to our ebook collection. The system knows from your library card if you are Palmdale City Library patron. Therefore, you first, you get first dibs on anything that we have purchased for our collection. And people, patrons in these other thirty-plus libraries, they can see our holdings as well. And they can place holds on our ebooks, but not ahead of Palmdale patrons. So that is a, uh, that's gonna be a, a great benefit to our patrons. And that'll happen by the end of May. Going back to the chronology. Since March twenty-fourth, the library has offered phone reference and readers advisory services. And pickup services of library materials by appointment, Monday through Friday. It has not been, um, I would not say it's been a, a tidal wave of use, however, those that have used it have deeply appreciated it. Lots of comments, lots of people that have used it. Those of the users have expressed their appreciation that they've been able to get some materials. Also, since March twenty-fourth. The library has provided a number of pre-recorded storytime sessions and other interactive programs through social media. Facebook and YouTube, to be precise. Including a number of picture books and several chapter books that have been read by staff members. More data will be provided to you later about, in fact, in the future. Uh, I intend, we intend to include social media. Views at least, of library programs and events. Uh, before your information, I can tell you that, uh, and Erin can back this up, because she, she sort of collects these, these stats. That as of May fourth, these storytimes have had over five hundred views on YouTube and over sixteen thousand views on Facebook. So they are being looked at, and we're, we're happy about that. The library is currently working on beginning a new digital service called Hoopla. Hoopla is another vendor. Uh, kind of like Biblioteca, but different vendor. Hoopla's been around for years. It's actually been a, a product, a service that I've been interested in for years. I've never, we, the libraries that I've directed, we've never had it. Under these conditions, it was a perfect opportunity, perfect time to divert some of our materials collection from printed resources to this resource. We are currently working on getting it set up, a little bit about Hoopla. Uh, let's see, it should be live and available in the next few weeks. It includes access to streaming movies, graphic novels, comic books. Ebooks. Audio downloadable books. And music. This is a different business and pricing model than, for example, Biblioteca. Uh, if, if you're interested or curious, the, uh, with Biblioteca, their model is kind of like granted, it's all digital, but it's kind of treated like the traditional library collection in that when we buy titles from Biblioteca, then it's like we own those ebooks. Not in the same way, but in fact, it may only be for a year. The publishers, some of the publishers say we, okay, you have, you own this for, this title for a year, then it'll go away. Uh, but it's kind of like the ownership model. Hoopla is different in that we don't own anything. But what we do is we pay them for each transaction that a patron enters into. And we set up the thresholds of how many transactions each patron can have through Hoopla. So to start out, it's a concerted approach, but our patrons will have, will be able to, uh, access or download or stream five items each month, starting out. And we pay, we will pay for each time a patron does that. And then we can monitor that, we will be monitoring that, we can change the parameters every day, any day if we want to. So that's how that will work. Diverted some funds from our materials, uh, budget to establish a, uh, kind of like a deposit account, so to speak. That we will start charging against as patrons start using the service. And Hoopla currently has over eight hundred thousand items in their collection that patrons can, can access. So. Did not want a crisis, however, I'm glad about this Hoopla service, because it's been, it's been an exciting thing. A lot, a lot of libraries have taken advantage of for years. Any questions about any of that?
Do you have any questions, trustee Morris, or trustee Hankin?
Is it available now?
Hoopla is not yet.
Okay. Timetable?
Within a couple of weeks. And, uh, I'll be sure to let you, as board members, know, but, but we will. Alright, let the initial flash, trustee Morris.
Is that a conflict of interest if we approach it?
Oh, as long as it's not a conflict or anything.
No, no, it's not a conflict. In fact, uh.
Well, I'm sure the best service for our patrons.
Of course.
And in fact, uh, th- this, this is a new, this is an exciting enough service that I've already asked them for some marketing materials, and we'll be able to press a release or two about it once it goes live.
Well, I'm glad that you gave the information about diverting the funds from materials, because obviously a lot of our in-person programming is not happening right now and in the foreseeable future. So that's, that was gonna be my question is where, where are we, if we're paying for each person, it makes sense to divert funds from somewhere else. So I'm glad that that's covered. Yeah, I like that the library is being innovative about things that we can still do to stay relevant.
And then it keeps, uh, keeps the libraries on people's mind, because they're going to download and stream things. That's where we're going now.
I know in the past month, I've had many people reach out to me, um, both people, colleagues and friends, asking what services the library is offering right now. Um, and a lot of people are at home with their children especially.
Yeah.
Um, and there's only so much TV that you can watch, so I think it's great that we're, um, offering digital options for families at home too.
Yeah, thank you. And, and on that note, ju- ju- just because that's what I do is tell people and remind people. Or for friends like that, if, if, if they're not aware, uh, you might remind them that we have online tutoring that's, that's been in place for years. We have, um, Mingle languages. You can learn up to seventy languages if you wanted to, things like that.
So that was actually gonna be one of my comments. I don't know if I should save it for trustee comments, but since you're giving your report and you kind of run the library, I think I'll just bring it up now. Um, I don't know, uh, first of all, kudos to, um, our social media team, because I have seen their presence online through this, and I think that's great. Um, and I think that the online reading and the storytime online is great. I was wondering if we're gonna move some of our in-person programming to like our, our storytime, like on a regular schedule, broadcast online. Because I know other libraries are doing that, and, um, especially for those kids and those families who look forward to those familiar storytime readers, um, like Miss Maria. Especially our bilingual storytime, if we're gonna be broadcasting some of those things.
Yes. As far as a regular schedule, we, we've I'm not sure about the regular schedule, uh, because one, one advantage, and then I appreciate the conversation, appreciate the questions. Because one advantage is pre-recording, and people can always, you know, go back and watch anytime they want.
Yeah.
Um, of course, you can have the live feed too, because it gets, you can save it. Uh, but yes, we're, we're definitely talking about that, and, and I'm, my, my report continues about the future, uh, so that's a good segue. Uh, we're not sure exactly what storytimes might look like going forward. Uh, part of the challenge. We will figure it out. Some of the live, it, it won't be the same, and, and that's the downside. I mean, I think you guys know me, I, I just kind of I'm, I'm kind of straightforward. I try to be straightforward and candid. And sometimes staff members are not thrilled about, uh, being seen online. Because of frankly stalking situations and, and concerns, and, and, and those can be real. So we're not sure, but, but there are other ways to do it without showing someone's face, and, and some of the storytimes have been done that way purposely by some staff members, because they don't want their, their face to be out there on the internet. But we are talking about virtual programs and, uh, and exactly how it's gonna look, we're not quite sure, but
Okay.
We definitely agree.
Yes. I'm, I'm glad you guys were thinking about it. I also wondered, um, you mentioned like the online tutoring programs and Mingle languages. Um, and I know we're working on having a stronger partnership with the city of, um, Palmdale, Palmdale School District. I didn't know if we've been in communication with them about advertising a lot of those services again through Peachjar and through, um, district to home communications for our community, because, um, they do have a bigger online presence just because they've been doing it longer.
Right.
Um, they have a lot more followers, so maybe if we want to partner with them to keep advertising some of those services and putting it at the forefront. Especially because summertime is approaching, school's gonna be ending, um, now that kids aren't gonna be having assignments. I definitely know that there's gonna be a lot of parents that are gonna be looking for things for their kids to do, especially in the absence of summer. I definitely know that there's gonna be a lot of parents that are gonna be looking for things for their kids to do, especially in the absence of summer plans.
Yeah, yes. Um, we have been in communication with them, um, more communication is coming. Uh, but thank you, and, and definitely agree.
Okay.
Thank you. In fact, the next section of our report is, so what about the future? And, um, my crystal ball still does not work as well, cause I wish it did, but what we've been talking about, as an apartment of the city of Palmdale, we receive our, I think you already know this, but as, we receive our marching orders from the mayor, city council and city manager through Parks and Recreation Department, that's the organizational structure. Uh, for your information, the library has been kept abreast of the latest announcements and information as they have come from the city. The library has worked with Kerry Smith and Eric Nebraska at their, and the city's request to develop a phased or staged approach to reopening to the public. The, the library's plan, written plan was included in the Palmdale Renaissance Plan that was submitted to Los Angeles County the last week of April. We anticipate and hope that the county will approve this plan or something close to it. That will allow the library to reopen to walk-in traffic as soon as prudent. Don't quote me on this by any means, but we think there's a chance that we may get to reopen to some walk-in traffic in the next two or three weeks, again.
Yeah, he's in change.
Yeah. So, let me share some of the details of what we have proposed, uh, as part of that plan to LA County. Not sure what the hours of operation would be for public access, but what we have submitted, facial coverings would be required by everyone entering the building. We proposed a limit of fifty people in the building at a time, which would be monitored and enforced by library staff. And I've already, uh, assigned myself to, to that duty. Not the entire day, but I'll be there a lot. Social distancing guidelines would be provided with signage and markings on the floor. The grocery stores have done us a service, because a lot of what I'm talking about, we've already been living for several weeks. Patrons would not be allowed to stay over an hour at a time. That is really hard for us. However, it's better than not being open at all. And because of the limitations on how many people can be in the building, obviously, it wouldn't be equitable to allow people to come in and just stay all day. So, in a phase-in approach, this is what has been proposed. The emphasis would be to provide access to the physical collection. Wifi access and wifi printing would be available for personal devices. However, the public access computers would not be available. And we have a really hard time with that as library staff, because we know so many of our patrons, that's their only computer access. However, realistically, as we talked about it, uh, for one thing, again, with the limited number of people in the building allowed, we cannot justify allowing somebody to stay at a computer that long. And frankly, uh, so many of our patrons, we know they need help, and that's why it breaks our heart to have to even propose this. We cannot think of a realistic way that we could help somebody from six feet away. And so as we talked about that, and we talked with city officials, we just felt like, let's just focus on this phase, letting people get to the collection. So along these lines, all chairs and tables would be removed from the building, so as to encourage patrons to not linger. And on that note, uh, that actually happened this morning.
I think that's appropriate. I mean, thinking of like the ordinances in the county for the beaches, like you're not allowed to sunbathe, you're not allowed to sit around you, you need to be actively moving. Accomplish the purpose, move on.
Alright, thank you. So it, it looks different, but all the tables and chairs are out of there as of, as of this morning. Walk-in programs would continue to be suspended till further notice. All returned materials would be quarantined in the activity room, if you recall, our little activity room over there, we're using it now as a quarantine room. Uh, they would be quarantined in that ti- activity room for twenty-four hours, and then they would be disinfected by staff members before being re-shelved or recirculated. The pickup service by appointment would be continued. We actually think that may never go away, cause it's a great service. The reference desk, that's what we call that desk, it's kind of the fishbowl there on the floor, would be moved from the floor, it's already been moved. And both windows, if you recall our floor plan, both windows into the circulation office would become service windows for both reference and circulation services. Furthermore, staff members have been working on modified plans for both summer reading program, there will be a summer reading program. We know that it's gonna be tracked online, we're working with a new product, so the minutes read be tracked online. Working on some different prizes that can be like badges that can be printed at home for those that can do that. We, because we're optimistic and believe that walk-in traffic will be allowed, we're planning on having, on offering some prizes for readers. However, instead of the old-school way of letting the kids, for example, rif- rifle through the treasure box of prizes, uh, we will prepare kits or packages of, of prizes that they can just take and go, grab and go. The summer lunch program, I've been in communication with the school district about that, because they, they provide the meals, they, they've been doing that, as you know. And we know that they are still providing meals during this time. I, through email, I've been in contact with my contact for the summer lunch program. The last communication we had is I let her know that we still want to be a site, however, folks would not be able to come into the library to, to eat their meals. I did email her about, uh, I think it was last week, I have not heard back from her, so I don't know their latest plans, but I reiterated that if they, my understanding, our understanding is that they're doing a grab-and-go type meal distribution thing now. So we expect that will continue in the summer, and so we are preparing the same kind of an approach with grab-and-go activity kits and literacy kits that the families could take along with their meals. So we're still willing to be a site, but it would be a grab-and-go scenario. I think that's it, other than, um, other services would be added back in as so we optimistically look forward to the time when health officials say that some of these restrictions can be, can be softened. So that, that's what I had on my notes.
Thank you for that thorough report. I wanted to comment on a couple items that you mentioned. Um, I'm really, really pleased to hear that we're still going to be a site for the summer lunch program. I think that's incredibly important, especially um, with schools being closed, as the school districts have been still providing meals, we have a lot of kids who are food insecure. Um, and so I think that's great that we're still gonna be, um, offering that, and you took the words right out of my head, I was thinking like, how are we gonna adapt the focus on literacy, but I like the take-home idea that kids can, and that also promotes literacy with parents, that if a parent has to guide them through an activity or, um, a coloring sheet or designing a bookmark, like it's still, um, gonna incorporate like the parents into that literacy process. Um, I'm wondering about the summer reading program, um, are there any local restaurants that are willing to give vouchers or certificates for like free ice cream from McDonald's or free personal pizza? Um, because I know a lot of the businesses are looking at still, um, doing curbside pickup or drive-throughs, so I don't know if that would also encourage people to go to, um, to get food from our local businesses, as well as rewarding kids with certificates of things that, like you said, instead of preparing things or having them rifle through a treasure box, you can say, oh, you accomplished your first ten books, your first ten hours of reading, here's a certificate for a free cone from McDonald's.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, oh, yes. I had a question about the bookmobile service, um, and I like the idea of the quarantining, that, again, you, you guys have been very proactive about, um, keeping our patrons safe as all of our, as well as our staff. Quarantining the books is a great idea and sanitizing them. Um, what would that look like for the bookmobile? Has that been discussed?
I'm glad you wrote that up, um, for several reasons. First of all, th- this is an aside to your question, but for your information, uh, just before this COVID nineteen thing erupted, um, with, with the city's help, the, uh, the Tecmobile has been in need of a, of a new wrap, a vehicle wrap for, for the, it's like a paint job, and now they call it a wrap. Cause they, cause it's like a vinyl wrap that they'd actually, you know, ad- adhere to the, it's not just a paint job anymore. And, and we are, uh, the main person that, that runs the Tecmobile for us, his name is Ricardo. Ricardo told me last fall that the wrap was really looking bad, and I said, okay, we'll put it in the budget. And then when I actually went and looked at it in January, I thought, wow. It's really looking bad. And, and we've been learning more about vehicle wraps. And that's, that's a benefit of being on the library board, you get to learn more about vehi- vehi- vehicle wraps. Uh, started talking to vendors and found out that, yeah, when they start to go, then they go quickly, and, uh, so long story short, with the city's help and using, um, foundation, foundation money, don- donated money to the Palmdale City Foundation, we were able to work on that project instead of waiting until July. And, uh, we got a vendor, low bid, but great ideas, very creative person. And we delivered the Tecmobile to that vendor like two days before the library closed. And so he's had, he's had, he's been working on it, he removed the old wrap, um, right away, started sending design ideas. And we, within the library, have really felt like we needed to consider changing the name. Tecmobile sounds cool. It's not real practical for a couple of reasons from our perspective. One is, those of us who go out of the Tecmobile say that all the time, people come up and say, oh, are you like the Geek Squad from, you know, Best Buy? Can you fix my cellphone? Yeah, um, so, we've been working on changing the name as well. And, uh, there will be an unveiling, so because of because of COVID nineteen, uh, he's had some trouble getting materials, but he's continued to work on the design. Uh, I'm very excited about the design, and, uh, the new name is, is the, the Knowmobile, K-N-O-W. The, the Knowmobile. It's not as, as catchy or as sexy, pardon the term, but as Tecmobile. However, it is more accurate to what it does and will do. Because the vision of, of the former Tecmobile, now the Knowmobile, really is not so much about the technology as it is a a, an outreach vehicle, literally, to promote library services and to attract people to come to the library. The, the collection on the previously Tecmobile is very small, only one or two hundred items. The, uh, the iPad or the notebooks that are on there will s- have those, cause that's a group that, for, for scheduled stops, i- it's a great, um, introduction to technology for for patrons, for kids to use. For example, when we've gone to the, uh, Boys and Girls Club, that's been a very useful source. However, we've been using it more as an outreach tool, and we do see ourselves expanding the regular schedule to go to sites like the Boys and Girls Club. And that is part of our long-term plan for the Knowmobile, as well as continuing to go to events like Labs for Literacy and, and all the other types of programs we're going to. So, I apologize, that, that was not direct answer to your question, but
No, that was a lot of information I would want to know.
Yeah.
Yeah, now I know. Um, one more question, um, thinking about the possibility of, um, when we do reopen, of course. Um, you mentioned facial coverings will be required. I know the county has required, um, facial coverings public for everyone over the age of two, I believe, is it two or five? It's two. So I'm wondering, um, if parents bring their children with them, will facial recoverings be required, um, for everyone, or just in alignment with county requirements of two and older?
Excellent question, and I meant that, I had not thought about that.
Okay.
So now I will.
Yeah, so maybe just aligning it, because otherwise there's
And I will, I will get guidance from the city.
The guidelines have been everyone over, over two
Okay.
Or anyone without any type of reading problems, I mean, there, there are other issues where, um, they're not recommended, but to your point, whatever the county is requiring, or whatever the city's requiring, that's, that's what we would recommend for the library.
Okay, good. I think, I think the alignment is important, because otherwise there's misinformation, miscommunication, and that can also prevent people from coming if they think, oh, I can't bring my, my baby, so I won't go at all.
Right.
Or I can't bring my toddler.
Right, I, I, I think I've heard language such as facial coverings are required for people when it is safe to do so, or when, when they don't have any conditions that would make it so they can't wear a facial covering, or make it
Right.
more dangerous to wear a safe, uh, facial covering, or something like that.
Yeah.
You know?
Alright.
Cause some people do have asthma or other conditions that might prevent them, or make it worse if they're wearing a facial covering, so. And children, I know they're particularly, um, concerned about it, I've been on quite a few calls regarding facial coverings in childcare, facial coverings at schools. So there are a lot of, there is a lot of information out there, so
Thank you.
We'd be sure to share that with Robert, make sure that we're following those same guidelines.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And then as far as like letting people in, um, I'm thinking kind of like grocery stores, how they've made exceptions for people with disabilities and people who are, um, senior citizens, especially as heating up. If we do open up and we're letting people in fifty at a time and up to an hour, you know, families are waiting to come into the library, just like a grocery store, are we going to make some sort of priority line and, um, prioritize those people with disabilities and seniors?
Excellent question. I bet I hadn't thought of that, but I think we should.
Or even special hours where those people get to come in first.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we should, sounds like you think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other comments from our, on the director's report?
Is the, uh, library conference that was set for May twentieth, is that still going forward?
Oh, yeah, I apologize, I did not give you an update. Uh, they have postponed or suspended that, then last I heard, they were still hoping to do it in the summer, I, I don't know if that's still happening, but it is not happening this month. Along those lines, other conferences, like e- even the California Library Association Conference, which was scheduled for, uh, October, has been canceled for this year. They're looking at the spring of twenty twenty-one, ALA, American Library Association, they canceled a long time ago, it was supposed to be in Chicago this summer.
And on that note, um, I know we canceled Inkwell, um, very sad about that. But I'm thinking, uh, more along the financial lines of that, um, because obviously we have vendors coming in and, um, uh, guest speakers, have those contracts been, uh, voided? Have things been handled financially on that end?
Yeah, thank you for the question. As far as the, we, we had one, this was, if you, you recall, uh, for the first time, we were gonna have a headliner author where we were, we were paying a small stipend. Her, uh, her publicist and I communicated early on in, in March, and we mutually agreed that at that time, that there were enough question marks that we should, uh, suspend that contract.
Okay.
That was, and then the other, the only other matters were local, like food trucks, things like that.
Okay. I don't know if we should like anticipate anything on the checks coming next month, so, good to know.
All, all those items have been taken care of.
Perfect. I think that is all my questions. Trusty Hinkin, do you have any questions? I will take that as a no, and I'll let him interject if he does. Alright. Is that the end of the director's report?
Yes.
Okay. Um, our next item on the agenda is the discussion regarding library fines and fees. I know that previously in March, we discussed, um, bringing some more information to the table, and because of everything going on, I'm not sure if we have that information, I'm gonna assume we probably don't, and that's okay.
Thank you for that.
Cause I think, I think we all need a little grace right now.
You guys are really on the same page today. I would just like to make that observation.
You just work on the agenda next month. Yeah, we, we, we'll come back to that, but I'm not, I'm not sure when.
No, I think that's appropriate, um, especially given that all of our board members are present, and we had discussed wanting to involve everyone and bring all the information to the table. And I think, um, correct me if I'm speaking for anyone that doesn't agree, but everybody gets grace right now, everyone's doing the best they can, and there's a lot of things on the plate. But I, but regarding fines and fees, I do appreciate the library, um, But I, but regarding fines and fees, I do appreciate the library um not hunting people down into collections during this time. There's a lot of people who are unemployed or have reduced um income and. We don't wanna be that per- uh as representative in our library vision that we've discussed before, that we wanna be a library for everyone. We don't wanna exclude people because of financial inability, and so just even delaying collections and extending due dates, I think that's a. Beautiful move on the library's part to show that we, we do care, and we're not trying to just hunt you down for our belongings.
Thank you very much, appreciate that, and, and on that note, I wanted to thank the city because they, they were supportive immediately, when, when that was requested.
Yeah, and thank you to the city for continuing to pay um people through this crisis.
That's completely up to, because of city management, JJ Murphy, our city manager has decided to do that, so.
Major kudos, major kudos on that.
But you can see. How much they're still continuing to do and preparing for when they're allowed to do more, so. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Um, item number twelve, comments?
You know, I do not have any uh, any comments other just to say, Robert, that was a fantastic report and kudos on everything you guys are doing at the library.
We have to be lifelong learners, right? Any trustee comments from online or?
Uh, none here.
Yeah, Grace, are you getting everything and um do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, no questions or comments.
Okay, well, I guess we will wrap it up, I will adjourn the meeting. At six twenty PM and hope that next month, maybe we get to see each other in person and are all safe and healthy. Thank you guys for being here, and thank you Renee, extra thank yous for being our tech support tonight.